Article section, but to start off, we want to ask each member of the board who's here with us today to briefly introduce themselves.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me, and I look forward to a productive conversation. Thanks for all the work you've done. I'm Emily Chavez. She heard pronouns. I represent District One. I'm a former educator. I was a DAE member, DPS teacher, and did other roles in education. Now, moving into social work as far as my career, and I think that's about it.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for having me. I'm Wendell Tab. I'm school board member, Consolidated District A. I'm a longtime educator. I taught for thirty-five years in the district. Currently, I'm still producing theater here in Durham. And I'm excited about this conversation. So, most of you all know where I stand on a lot of things, and I'm glad to be able to share it with you in this space because I'm an advocate for voices. So, most of you all know that. So, thank you for doing this. This is important.
Thank you so much. My name is Natalie Byer. I'm a member of the Board of Education since 2010, representing District Four. It's an honor to be among such a ringful of educators and to be on the board with experienced educators. If you don't know me, I came to this work as a parent activist and helped found Public Schools First, North Carolina, and still volunteer on the board of that organization that is trying to draw awareness to the need for strong support for public schools in North Carolina across the state. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to jump right into Article One, Budget Transparency.
All right. Thank you all for being here. My name is Shmaiah Truitt, and I am truly thankful to serve as the middle school representative for me to confirm. I have been a social studies educator at Durham Public Schools at the one and only Carrington Middle School since 2011. And prior to that, I worked with the Atlanta Public School System. Now, I am proud to bring twenty-eight years of experience in this educational role. The members of DAE believe that it's imperative that Durham Public Schools operates with full transparency when it comes to the budget. Transparency is a foundational pillar that fosters trust within our DPS family. In alignment with Article One of the DAE platform, we advocate for quarterly budget report that includes details for the district departments and individual work sites accessible to all staff members. Furthermore, we believe it is essential that information regarding all salaries, incentives, and bonuses offered to the district employees and administrators be readily available to all employees. Now, there are close to two hundred positions slated to be cut. However, it is being conveyed as changing allotment. Now, we at DAE believe that our fellow coworkers deserve the truth. These transparency initiatives are vital to building and maintaining trust. And when transparency is prioritized, distrust cannot take place. So, I have questions for you. Will you commit to all points in this article and include them in next year's budget? And these are the articles. Number one, quarterly budget versus actual reports for the district departments and work sites that are available to all staff. Two, make internal audit information available to all staff, including up-to-date information on the fund balance and all of the sources of district funds. And transparency around all salaries, incentives, and bonuses offered to district employees and administrators for any reason. Again, will you be able to commit to all points in this article and include them in next year's budget? And also, will you commit to finding out what this article would cost and not voting on a budget until we find out if the article is financially possible next year? That's imperative. Is it possible for next year? So, we are no longer in that quagmire that we were last year, right? So, just to make sure that we have a viable budget that's for the coming up fiscal year. Those are my two questions. Thank you.
So, I appreciate these articles and these details, and I look forward to ways that we can work together collaboratively to get the information that you all need so that we can continue to rebuild the trust. I think it's also important, and I think some of my colleagues that were here last week with you all shared just frank honesty, that you can see that we are still in recovery mode in finance, and we, our staff is working tirelessly to catch up. That's just frank honesty about where we are. And so, I look forward to them, you know, having conversations with you all about what they can do realistically as they continue to work through this mess. You know, from following our budget cycles in years past, that we pass a temporary budget, and then a budget resolution follows, and budget amendments follow quickly and methodically through the year. We passed the first one of those last week, right? And so, our audit is also behind. It is forthcoming. We are very anxiously awaiting the same information you're asking for. So, I see that time's up, so I'll let my colleagues jump in. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you so very much. To answer your question, I like transparency, and that's what I've always said my whole entire career. And I'm one on this board that will continue to push for transparency. I too want that audit released because that's going to be a driving force behind some of the decisions that are going to be made. And I've made that very clear, that we are really behind on that, and I need that audit released, and I've made that very clear. In terms of the budget as it stands right now, there's going to be information, I believe this will be coming out shortly, that may make a difference. And so, I definitely want you all to pay close attention to what's going to be coming out, if there are going to be any changes or anything like that. That's for transparency. And so, I would definitely stay with the transparency and want us to share whatever information we can with the public that is shared. And so, I'll stay about that.
Let's see. I have, the first one, I support these in general. I support the budget transparency in general. And let me say that, to answer your second question first, I'm concerned, I mentioned the last meeting, that I'm concerned that we won't have enough information to vote this Thursday. So, apart from DAE's ask, I'm concerned, but I also, I understand, I heard that this came up last time, that there's an MOU with the county. I'm trying to see that because I haven't seen it, and that would put us behind. So, I'm also concerned about not following through on what we agreed upon. So, I am uncertain, and I'm not going to commit not to vote on the budget this Thursday, but I have a lot of reservations, and I'm trying to collect all my questions. Would like to see answers to your questions too. They're excellent questions. So, in terms of these three items, I think the budget versus actuals is reasonable. Audit information, I want to see. The fund balance, very important. Up-to-date information, I have a question about how often that is. And then, the number three, I think that's reasonable. I do want to discuss that with admin and just see if there are any reasons why they would say not to do it.
If I could just piggyback off a little bit what you said, it's so important that the information that we have, that we are on a tight deadline, so getting stuff to the county commissioners. And I want all of us to be very clear with that, which could change some things, but we haven't seen that.
Thank you for those comments. I do want to ask again, it was pretty clear from Ms. Chavez and Mr. Tab that more information is, that you want more information, and that you're apprehensive about a budget vote this week, as well as it doesn't, there's not clarity on the exact MOU between the district and the county commissioners. But I wanted to ask Ms. Byer one more time if she would be willing to delay a vote this week until there is more clarity and more information.
So, I have heard through commissioners that the county is expecting our budget in a timely manner so that your requested needs can be funded. So, I don't think it's in the best interest of Durham Public Schools for us to delay. I understand your frustrations. I understand that there is more information posted even today with more clarity, more details, and I encourage all to continue to work with us while we try to get answers that are helpful. But I can't commit to delaying funding for Durham Public Schools.
Would it be possible for Durham Public Schools to ask the county for an extension since there seems to be a delay in the audit, which seems to be out of the district's control?
Ask you a question again because I think we want to be clear on what you're asking.
Asking the county commissioners for an extension or clarifying, you know, if it, if the MOU says May thirteenth, and you're, I mean, you're asking for a vote this Thursday, which is ahead of a deadline technically. But if you're saying that there's critical information, such as the audit that has not been released yet, which is out of your control, it seems like you should be offered an extension. And would you be willing to ask the county commissioners for an extension for your budget submission?
That would definitely be what the law says we have to do with the county commissioners because I know there are specific guidelines that we have to follow and that the county commissioners have to follow as well. But if that's a possibility, you know, extensions are done all the time if it's available. So, my position would be if it's available, yes, but of course, that's still following what the guidelines and the law would be.
I'm happy to get you all a copy of the memorandum of understanding between the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Education. But it's, I need to really be clear about how behind we are. And I appreciate, I appreciate all the needs and the, and the, I think you need to know that we're fighting for you. And our MOU states that we will have information to them by March first. So, we are behind already, and I want to make sure that we have the best chance to get full consideration of this budget request. And even the superintendent's budget that is over sixteen million dollars, commissioners are not suggesting that they will fully fund that. So, this is going to be a difficult budget cycle, and I want to be honest with you all about that.
That last point makes it seem like knowing what's in the fund balance and knowing all the spending across districts and having that money, those figures available would be even more important if you're already predicting that the county is not going to fund your full budget request and that it will get kicked back and more challenging decisions will have to be made. It does seem like more information was shared this evening, right before this meeting, about reduction in force. And I think that's one form of transparency, announcing that there will be a reduction in force. But the other part of that transparency is understanding how much is in the budget to fund staff and how many staff are funded this year and where those staff are going to be cut. It says in the email that no cuts will impact children and students, which seems, you know, as a group that sometimes gets criticized for not putting students first, which is not our goal, that seems like a statement that shouldn't be questioned. And with that, we'll go to Article Two, Article Eight, sorry.
Article Eight, yeah. Hi, I'm Nate McGurk. I am DAE's democratically elected EC rep on the Meet Confere team. I'm a special education teacher at Gettons, ten-year DPS employee, thirteen-year DPS student. So, yeah, if we take a look at Article Eight, DPS workers demand no frontline positions be cut to pay for the district's budget mismanagement. That does sound simple. We do have more information in this new email talking about a reduction in force for central services, which is a good idea, I think. But other cuts are being framed as a change in allotment, and that's still a reduction in force. It's a reduction in force on the front lines. Hundred and twelve teacher positions to be cut, nine and a half APs, those are frontline positions, and I'm not sure how anybody can say those cuts don't affect the classroom. And the kind of the point is, it's still very unclear what positions are being cut. There's numerous positions that have been unfilled this entire year. There's nothing said about whether those are still going to try to get filled or not. It seems like they're getting cut. The email did state, the Sparkmail did state, that retired positions are not going to get filled back up. That's still a frontline cut. And just because a position's been vacant this year or somebody's retiring doesn't mean those positions aren't needed. There are no positions at DPS work sites that are unnecessary. The adults need to be on the front lines to work with the kids and deliver these, deliver the mission that DPS has to these students. So, it's really unclear from what's been presented so far. Like, the Sparkmail just even confuses it more, to be honest. We need to call that a reduction in force on the front lines, and we want to know if you can commit to not cutting frontline positions in next year's budget. We need that information about what positions are being cut. If you do look at the targeted questionnaire, one of the handouts and information you got before this meeting, it's that top question. We want to know how many full-time employees is the district budgeting for by a position? And it could be great to be like that format in the old budgets. We want to be able to compare year to year. I would hope y'all want to be able to compare year to year. And that's what we need to be able to say, is this a responsible budget? Do we actually, are we able to stand behind some frontline cuts? We would like none. But we don't have enough information to say yes or no at this point. Can the board direct that information within the budget proposal? Principals already have it individually in meetings. There should be no problem to aggregate it. There should be no reason we can't put the numbers together.
Your question is, can the board direct the information of what, basically along the lines of this first question, of what positions are cut to be put in the budget?
Yeah, put that in there so we can all be informed, and if we can commit to no frontline position cuts in this year's budget.
In terms of positions, I'm not for cutting any positions, let's say, frontline anywhere. I don't want any positions cut, and I've been very clear with that. But however, you know, we're dealing with the budget and this cycle that we're in. I'm real, I'm real about the fact that something is going to get, to get cut. Now, we have to decide what is going to get cut. I definitely do not want EC positions to be cut. Definitely do not want EC positions to be cut. Because sometimes we are so easy to, with our marginalized people who need the most help, sometimes we can be, we cut those positions. So, definitely do not want that. I would like to see, actually, a breakdown of what positions are going to be cut. So, I think I would like to see that.
So, I appreciate y'all bringing this to us. I know how important it is to protect students in the classroom, and I know that these are really challenging times because it feels like the federal government and the state government are not supporting education. We are, I mean, I'm looking at materials that did just drop recently. We asked last week for more information, more details. There's a PowerPoint that is up that has specific allotments. It shows a hundred and twelve as a difference of position impact between this year and last year, K-12. But I also noticed that there were a hundred and fifty-four classroom teacher vacancies in DPS. These are some of the things that we will continue to drill down on with you all. Page five and six colleagues have the PowerPoint. I think it's, it's, this is the part that concerns us the most, and I know it concerns you all the most. And there's just the reality that our, our federal COVID money is gone, that we don't see relief coming from the state. And so, we're, we're making really impossible decisions. And we appreciate y'all asking the tough questions and, and working alongside us so we can minimize the impact on your student communities.
So, yeah, I see it's just that the, our agenda was posted this Thursday. We saw some drafts of these spreadsheets the other day. So, I thought that they were very clear and helpful in understanding what the proposed changes were. I think the request to put this information out publicly with the budget is reasonable, so I support that. My understanding is that the change would be in allotments, still within what the state funds us, and, and that we would also take into account some, making things equitable based on other factors of flexibility. So, I, I'm not opposed to altogether to cutting positions. And I know that there's been an assessment of central office positions as well, and I've discussed that in our operations and general review meetings. And so, I think that a reassessment of job positions and alignments and all of that kind of stuff has been good and needed, especially, especially at the central office level. And so, I don't, I do not want to see frontline positions currently filled by people that would be outside of these ratios cut, but I'm over time, so.
If I could just respond quickly. Everywhere we are losing ESTRA funds, we're losing federal funds. But in Guilford County, Asheville City School Boards have approved budgets that do not cut any staff positions. Buncombe County Superintendent put forth a no-cuts budget that maintains all staff positions. Also, in counties surrounding Buncombe, they're not planning on making any frontline cuts. And a lot of those school districts are mountain counties that were affected by Hurricane Helene. We can make promises towards a no-cuts, no frontline cuts budget. We can make it happen. We do know it's hard. Our union brothers and sisters in other places are seeing it happen in their counties.
May I ask one question too? Frontline staff?
Frontline staff is any staff that works.
That makes sense. And I will, I've been in touch with the Buncombe School Board members, so I will ask them about their budget and I'm going to do that because I'd like more information than going to this.
One thing to add to this part of the discussion is that if we don't know what's in the fund balance, we don't really know if frontline cuts are justified or any cuts are justified. So, will you commit to saying no to a budget with frontline cuts if, until we have full budget transparency and the fund balance is known?
So, we anticipate having the audit completed soon, and we'll release that as soon as it is available. But that is where we get the assessment of where our fund balance is. As you know, we cannot, and it is not good financial practice, to use fund balance for salaries and recurring positions. And so, fund balance gives us a really important piece of information. But it also was, we had to dig in the last two years to fund balance to make these budgets whole. And I'm concerned that it's actually lower than, than we needed to be going forward. So, I don't see that as a strong source of revenue. I think it would be helpful to me, and I'm only one board member, but to hear from you all on the, on your assessment of the importance of the superintendent's recommendations in his budget and whether you believe that, what you think is most important in there. You've talked about master's pay being in there. You've talked about the things that he's delineated that are in line with, with your priorities. If it came to it, do you want us to cut some of those in order to keep frontline personnel? I mean, that's where we'll be wrestling, I think, in the future. And I look forward to kind of y'all's assessment of what makes the biggest impact on, on students and staff going forward.
Just to reply to that comment, well, without knowing the budget or how much is in the fund balance, it would be very hard for us to engage in a meaningful discussion about making hard choices. And right now, it sounds like the district is about to make some really hard choices and cuts. And we'll hear from it in a moment. And, you know, provide local supplements for sixty percent of staff, but leave forty percent of staff without a local supplement. And again, without that top priority of transparency and understanding what's in the budget, a budget discussion is challenging to have.
Just another question, so we can also clear on this right away. So, with the, that has to maintain all frontlines, that includes basically not adopting new ratios? And, because I'm interested to know what you will think about these, these ratios that have been proposed as well. Is it also no cuts to the vacant positions as well?
I mean, we would definitely like to know what's being cut. It's just still very unclear. So, at the same time, we're asking that, we always like emphasize that those vacant positions are not unneeded positions. So, that's, I mean, that's the reason for bringing up this discussion. But really, we don't know what's being cut. That's the problem.
And I do agree that, that transparency, our needs to be there. And I'm sure that within the next day or so, we're going to get more information about what we're seeing now. And I think it is important for us to know exactly what's, what's being cut. And I was an educator. I want to know. So, so thank you for the question.
We'll continue on to Article Two.
Thank you all for coming. My name is Nisha Watson. I'm a twenty-six-year veteran at Eastway Elementary. I teach PE, and I'm also a proud bus driver. I've been with transportation for three years now, one or four years, and I love, I love driving for these students. We have lived through a crisis in transportation, and we're still experiencing it. And on the, piggybacking on what they were saying, if, the, the system is really, really fragile, and we're still fragile. People are leaving still every day. We're losing drivers. And we know what that crisis causes. So, I also represent certified staff as well. So, if we, the positions that need to be filled, if they're not filled, it's going to put us in another crisis because somebody's going to have to do their work in the building. Another teacher, another assistant, somebody's going to have to do the work at that position. So, in this measure, we voted that these measures will address the transportation issue. One, a step plan that rewards years of service and meaningfully addresses vacant pressure. Two, while we appreciate Dr. Lewis's budget proposal for two hundred dollars, Two, while we appreciate Dr. Lewis's budget proposal for a $200 supplement for bus drivers, it left out the monitors. And monitors need a supplement as well. We're asking for a $300 supplement for bus drivers and monitors. We're also asking, asking that the $25 an hour substitute and part-time driver pay be reinstated. Because that was also, that has not been addressed this way. And we've been asking about that all year long. Also, all classified staff do not earn personal days just like teachers do. They do earn annual leave days and those days are used up for holidays. So we're asking that they would get two personal, two personal days, excuse me, and three paid inclement weather days when their hours are used up, their days are used up. Because they do not earn personal days. And we know sicknesses and emergency come, come up and inclement weather days, annual leave days, excuse me, are used up during the year. And finally, key fobs for all transportation workers so they can gain access to schools, to use restrooms, and entrances into, um, entrances into the building. Will you commit to all the points in this article and include them in next year's budget? Will you commit to finding out what this article would cost and not voting on a budget until we find out if this article is financially possible for next year?
Thank you. I was trying to find it in the PowerPoint that just came out. Think I had a chance to look at what they're, the new one? Because I don't want to speak out of turn. I would, I would definitely want to, want to take that back to them in terms of about the monitors. It's very important for me, you know, to know that they weren't excluded, you know? And maybe that's an oversight or maybe they are excluded. So, but I would want to know for sure if that's, if that's the case. In terms of voting, I do believe that with the transportation for most recently have been moving in the right direction. But I, I just don't know what we're losing. Because I, I know, I got the information about what bus drive, what we were gaining. But at the same time, when you're gaining, there may be some losses as well, right? So I would love to see, you know, what, you know, if there are losses. Also, I would love to know what those losses are to kind of balance out, are we really gaining? Or how much are we gaining? That's important to me. I would not say that I wouldn't vote on the budget in terms of the drivers once I get that information. But because I don't have that information, I would hesitate to give an answer of what I will or not do until I have that information.
Thank you for driving. Thank you for sharing your talents with our students in so many ways. It is critical. This is the budget priority that keeps me awake at night and has throughout the last several years. You, I think you probably, if you've been watching our meetings, I've asked, I've asked them to cost out what it takes to raise driver pay to $20 an hour and address that compression all the way through. And I, you know, we were using that COVID, federal COVID money to pay folks that separated 25 an hour. Same thing for a lot more after-school workers. We were really trying to maximize as much as we could do for staff. We no longer have. But if we can't get kids to school, we, we can't do anything in town. And so it's really, really critical to me that we address this urgently and the priority. I don't know on these leave days and unpaid days, whether there are any HR concerns with, with the state about it. But I'm willing to look into that if you think that would make a significant difference to drivers. I, I think you all, you heard us kind of unanimously direct our staff to work together and figure out what would have the biggest impact on drivers in, in the most rapid fashion. Because we have to hold and retain drivers. And I suggested, I think, in a meeting, finding summer work for folks that want to work over the summer and making sure that people that have benefits have as much as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you for presenting about this. And I, let's see, in general, I, I do want to, I have a lot of questions about this, so I want to ask more questions and find out what, um, what all of it would cost, what it would look like in the budget. I was wondering about the, um, two personal days, three paid inclement weather days, just why those numbers? But in general, I think giving people, you know, time to have choices. And I, listening to the DA Transportation Delegation was very informative a few months ago. So I, that has given me a lot more context for understanding these, um, these asks. So, uh, and implement weather days and all of that, but just, yeah, would love to discuss all those numbers exactly. And I was wondering if, what number six, if anything, had changed? Because we did kind of have conversations about that and I thought that there was some shifting. But about this supplement with the bus monitors, again, want to see what that would cost and understand more of the context. I do, I think bus drivers have to go through more rigorous training to become bus drivers, so maybe that's part of it. But I don't know if we're having the same crisis as with our bus monitors, so I would like to learn more. In general, I think I believe more until we're done.
We'll go to Article Three.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Carlos Perez. I'm a social studies teacher over at Jordan High School. Where I've been teaching for nearly a decade now. And I was elected to be our union's high school rep for meeting confer team. I don't think I need to tell anybody in this room that ICE agents have been terrorizing students at all levels of education and that there's a real fear hanging over our district. I also think I don't have to, um, say that we all share commitments of providing a safe learning environment for all of our students. And so Article Three is pretty clear. We're asking on the district not to collaborate with ICE officials. And last week, when we met with Umstead, Carter, Otten, and Goff, we got across the board commitments for all of the points under Article Three from know your right, making know your rights cards available all the way down to retraining staff around anti-bullying policies. And so we're asking if you all are going to be willing to commit with the rest of your colleagues.
Yeah, thank you for this. I think, um, so I, yeah, I support these points. I did learn more about policy 4321 and Allison and, and, she's here or not? Brought that to us, but it has been, my understanding is, there's previous board work that enveloped part of that policy into 5120. So I still want to do a deeper dive. I need to look at them. But I was glad to have that information on the history of the policy and I know a great deal of work was put into it. Jessica and I are meeting tomorrow with Dr. Lewis about immigration issues and have been in touch with him about a lot of, um, a lot of concerns. We met with some teachers and, um, and parents and community members a few weeks ago who were, you know, saying basically DPS has been too, too silent on these issues. So I've heard that. And, um, so I think, and I, Dr. Lewis asked, when I spoke to him a week and a half ago or so, I said there is more consistency needed across schools. I heard that. Um, and so he was asking what those things would be. I gave the example of the red card. So I think we'll talk in my depth about that tomorrow.
Sorry, real quick, just to, to clarify, from what we understand, that policy for 4321 was sunset. It might enter that policy as you mentioned. But that what was transferred over was the 2009 version of that policy and not the 2017. So part of the commitment that we'd be asking for is for the 2017 updated policy from policy 4321. Is the one that is transferred, if that makes sense?
Yes, and I'm happy to look closer, but those details are a bit difficult.
I have no problems with what we have here from one through five. But I am going to refer to my colleagues, Ms. Carter Otten and Bishop Chavez, when they meet to update me on their conversation. You know, how they land, which will probably be how I land because they're, they're going to do the work on this one.
So I want to thank you for bringing this to us and thank you for hosting the training with SIEMRA at Jordan. It was so well attended. Ms. Chavez and I were delighted to be there and it was so needed in this community. We sit in terrifying times for our immigrant families. And we are doing, trying to be smart in how we protect our students and families without drawing more attention to vulnerable students. And so it is, um, it is a really challenging one to draw. I'd be happy to look at 4321. I know Allison and we were really proud of what was in it before. And I don't know what legislatively got dropped in the, in the mingling of policies, but I don't believe it was intentional. And, I mean, all of this looks reasonable to me. What I, what I want to be clear in the difficult part when we meet with our lawyers is that the feds have made criminal charges for teachers if they are to, you know, fight under, if someone tries to put a judicial warrant, which I hope never happens at a school. They have criminal charges for teachers and we need to make sure that employees know that. And we perhaps could set up a bail fund or legal fund or something. But like, when you say no collaboration, like, we are, we are in very unresistant, difficult times, as you know. And I, we don't want employees to face criminal charges without knowledge of, of what this evil administration is doing. So, um, we, we stand in solidarity with, with you all. We stand in solidarity with our immigrant students and families and look forward to ways we can better protect them and train staff.
So just to clarify on that last one, and I'll ask the question again. Are you all three accepting all five of the, of Article Three? All five points in Article Three?
Yes, the only thing I would say is that I know with training, it's always like a matter of what training first and how to squeeze it and everything. So I don't know if you have the timeline in mind for that, but I agree that it's important. So yes, I support moving them all forward and I think some are more urgent than others.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree. I don't know what, I don't always understand Point Three and what letter you all want to be provided in. I would appreciate some clarification on what that is and how it's helpful. Provide proof of enrollment letters for all students with specific language about residing in Durham domicile. Provide these annual with the goal of preventing expedited removal of students. So.
I know, we know that, um, that Jordan High School printed those out for all their students. So we can set an example. So you all know what we're referring to.
So I would just say, when Jordan did that, we had a lot of folks get concerned that we were actually doing the wrong thing and making students more vulnerable. So we got some blowback about that. And so I think it's important for us to work through that together in a way that's helpful. That I trust Ms. Chavez and for you to work on.
And just, I think, thanks for raising that. And just, you know, the, the thinking to provide it to all students as well as to make the know your rights cards available to all students is that it doesn't single out any student. And so that, that is kind of the thinking of why they're asking me to provide those to all students.
And we'll move on to Article Four.
My name is Angelina Parkstone. I am the cafeteria manager at Hillside New Tech Middle College, DPLC in New Direction. Are you tired yet? I am. We feed 80% of Durham's children two meals each day, but we cannot survive on one DPS salary. Classified workers are being asked to do more and more, like feeding additional schools, without extra pay. It is time for classified staff to be paid fairly based on important work they do. Employees are burnt out because they work more than one job and struggle to pay bills. These are concerns that are felt by many classified employees, even me. Uncertainty is not the way to live. It causes stress. It causes serious health problems. I implore you to work with the meeting confer team and listen to recommendations on the 25, 26 school year budget. After many meetings and coworkers in transportation CNS, IMA, and SOVICOR came up with three top asks. Our ask are local increases for all classified staff next year, a minimum of 2% staff increase, no freezing classified pay. Retention bonuses are needed by all classified employees, whether they are new or veterans. We need to keep the employees we have. What, what is it good to hire new employees if we lose our experienced dedicated employees by not showing them and hearing them and appreciating them for the hard work they do every day? And closing, to recap, will you take action and implement this article before the end of the school year?
Hello, thank you for coming. My name is Kelly Muffrin and I am ECIA in the co-program. I am an IR, IR representative on the meeting confer team. I've been educated for 23 years. The past two years have been here at DPS. I am here representing my classified staff as well on Article Number Four. We are struggling. Most of us need more than one job to survive. Even my, um, even my coworkers like myself, we have done the job for decades, can't pay our bills. That's why I'm really excited to collaborate with you and the district leadership on how to fix the classified salary schedule to make sure our years of experience are valued, are valued. Our most experienced educators need to be, I'm sorry, need to be valued or they will continue to look for jobs elsewhere. And our students will suffer. Right now, the salary schedules are hard to understand and are constantly changing and barely go up each year. Our students deserve high-quality, experienced educators and that are dedicated to the job. We deserve this, we deserve to have a stay in our working conditions and to be paid a living wage. So do you know how much it would cost for a 2% raise? Why should classified staff have to wait for the state if certified staff doesn't have to wait? I'm also here speaking for another one of our classified representative who couldn't be here tonight because, like I said, we need more than one job to survive. Her name is Asia Pope and she's a data manager. She, um, she's had her position for, for over 17 years. She has to work another full-time job along with her 40-hour-to-work DPS. So we're, she's, I'm sorry. A point two about the no freezing the pay for maximums set by the state. Veteran and creative staff, we possess years of experience. Freezing our pay can feel like a penalty for being loyal, which can result in pushing out, pushing us out of the field entirely. State skills don't keep up with inflation. It is unfair and demoralizing. I am constantly trying to move up because each position will give me a guaranteed step up. I had to fight to keep two years when I moved into a new position as data manager. It leads to burnout and feeling unappreciated. That's why people leave. But when it comes down to what we can, we can and can't do for our mental health and families, we have to leave and shouldn't, and it shouldn't be that way. As classified staff, we are continuously thrown to the wolves, being purposely put in situations by individuals who claim to understand and care. They say one thing and do another. Tonight, please don't continue the backstabbing trend that clearly shows us you don't care. So tonight, will you support all the points in Article Four? If not, will you wait to vote on a budget until you have the necessary information? If not, will you wait to vote on a budget until you have the necessary information?
Thank you so much for presenting that. I'm, first I want to say I regret that we are not able to reanalyze the, all the classified salary schedules this spring that is needed. It's been coming back and forth, obviously. And I, so.
That's, that's one of the points. I, I've heard our administration say that something like that could begin, you know, after this budget cycle. So I hope that we will follow through on that, and that's what I would like us to do. But I think these points are reasonable, but I do have questions about retention bonuses. If there was a specific, I just have questions about what that would cost, or for positions offering new signing bonuses. What all, what all does that include? Or I'm not clear on what all includes, or if you had a number you were thinking about, for these retention bonuses.
We don't have an exact cost for those retention bonuses. That would be something that if we had worked or reached out to the budget, then we could collaborate on. But we know when we spoke to thousands of staff across the district, that that was something that was, that came to mind as a way to support staff and as a way to attract new staff.
So positions like EC facilitators or something, or positions that are offering new signing bonuses for people coming on, the same retention bonuses, that's what you're saying? I want more information about that. So I understand you all don't have all that information, but would like to know, yeah, exactly what that would cost. But I agree with the spirit of it, which is that retention is important and not just, you know, cycling through people. So, yeah, the other two, I, yeah, I support those.
Thank you. I support one and two. I truly like more information around the retention, what that would cost to the district. But one and two, I have no problem with. Yeah, so two is fine.
Thank you. I agree with colleagues. I still have questions about Number Three and look forward to further clarification on what you're thinking is impactful there. But I appreciate the first two points, and very much appreciate the work of everyone in these positions. I hear your frustrations. I want us to be a district where we lead the state, where people only have to have one job, whether it's classified or certified staff, and where we join you all in Raleigh to fight and advocate for a budget that is more like Governor Stein's budget than like the crappy one that came out of the Senate last week. Thank you.
Point will be agreed.
With regards to some questions about the cost, will you commit to directing administration to cost out retention bonuses for this year's budget, as well as the two percent salary increase for all classified staff for this year? So, Number One and Number Three.
Yes.
Yeah, we will, it's up to the administration.
I think they've already costed out the salary increase, and we need to get y'all clarification of what they've modeled. And so I look forward to sharing that with y'all.
So far, there hasn't been any public information about classified. In fact, last week, Mr. Teeter said that all classified pay could be frozen until we know what the state is going to do. And so right now, we're talking about local pay increases, like the ones that are in the budget for certified staff, and not meaning for whatever the state is going to do.
Yeah, I understand that, and I also want to appreciate that Mr. Teeter is unwinding a bunch of problems that he didn't make. And I think he's being very physically conservative in his budget model as he's modeling for us.
That we don't get into problems like we got to a year and a half ago, but thank you.
And just one more point on that with the classified pay. That last year, the same thing happened with waiting until the state decided their budget, which as you know, comes several months already into the school year. And it is extremely disrespectful for forty percent of DPS staff to have to wait till the middle of the fall to understand what their current salary is going to be.
And so what we're really asking is for Durham Public Schools to commit to something different and to commit to respecting classified staff and figuring out if there's a way in the budget to provide local pay increases. Can you commit to asking DPS administration to see if there is any additional funding for classified pay increases?
I could commit to asking. There's no problem about asking.
What, what do you mean exactly? Additional funding from, like?
In the budget, well, like if there is money in the budget that could be used for classified pay or for asking for additional funding for classified pay.
Like if there is, just to be really clear, what, like, oh, just in our current, like this current, like this current year, if there's any budget, if there are any, is any funding that's kind of left over?
Right, and again, without a full budget picture, and I understand not wanting to spend into your fund balance, but Mr. Teeter is on the record to alluding to the fact that it was better and it wasn't spent down as much as you thought it was going to be spent down. So right now, there's two point two million dollars in the proposed budget for certified pay increases. So seeing if there is an equal amount or more for classified staff increases.
Yes, yep.
That was a yes, Miss Fire.
I just said I don't have anything to add. I look forward to getting y'all more clarity on this, but we really are dependent on the state budget. And the years that it passes sooner, we know more about how we can maximize what we're giving to staff, no matter how angry it makes us all. That's, you know, so we can ask questions and.
That would be great if you could ask questions, because DPS has decided to use local funds for certified pay increases, but not to use local funds for classified pay increases. And that's independent of what the General Assembly is going to decide. We'll move on to Article Five.
Thank you. If you can turn to Article Five, and it's on the screen. Pulling up my notes. I'm gonna be speaking through this, because one of our representatives could not get back in time for the meeting, Sonia Lopez. And you all have heard about this before and have a lot of information from the social workers. And just want to get straight to the questions. So there are three. Dr. Lewis's proposed budget includes extending Masters Pay to social workers, but not to everyone who would have qualified before 2013. So if you see in our article, we listed out a couple of those positions that also were excluded this year. This is not a complete list. But the question, first question is, will you commit to extending it to everyone who would have qualified before 2013? Which was what we all thought, and I think that you all thought that was voted on last year. So that's the question, first question.
So I've been a longtime advocate of Masters Pay, and I apologize for all the ways that the Masters Pay rollout was not clear and that people were impacted. I, as an advocate for Masters Pay, am really struggling with this proposed one point four million dollars extra in the budget, when I'm wrestling with things like classified pay and bus driver pay. And I want to be clear, like, and honest about that. And that's why I've asked for more information. You heard us all ask for more information. We are only the second district in North Carolina to restore Masters Pay, and I want us to be in line, at least with Wake. But part of our intention, and interim superintendent Moore's intention, was to fill classroom student-facing positions. And so I have some questions about how we should do that, and if the ten percent bump is too much, and if we split it amongst the same amount amongst more people. I have just a lot of questions about how we're gonna be able to continue to maintain Masters Pay in Durham if it is not picked up by the state. And so I wanted to just be transparent about that. It's something that I really wrestle with, as far as what a big supplement it is when a lot of our classified staff are really struggling and aren't yet at twenty dollars an hour, so.
In short, yes, I support equalizing Masters Pay, and I think having some kind of standard threshold, like when people have qualified in 2013, makes sense. I have been asking for a comprehensive list of all the positions, and I haven't seen that yet. That's one of the things I hope to see this week, that would be covered by Masters Pay, because I keep seeing like a lot of examples, but I'd like to see every single position that would be covered. And I know that some positions are, it's my understanding, some certified positions are paid more because they are, have to have a master. So I just want to clarify on clarification on those positions. I also agree with some of the concerns that Natalie was raising about how we will sustain this and competing priorities. And I, I do think, while I want to see us fully reinstate Masters Pay, that we, looking at a lower percentage for everyone who qualifies equally is something we should consider. I am, last year when we had to do our priorities, I think Masters Pay was actually, even though I think it should be consistently applied, and I think we should have it, it was a lower priority than classified pay for me. So I think there are, I'm very concerned with like what you were talking about with the classified pay. But, but yes, I think it should be equalized, and I think we should have done that this year too.
Thank you. I'm a proponent of Masters Pay for everyone. I've been very clear on that. However, as we're looking at just giving it to one person, I do have some concerns of just giving it to just social workers, and I want to give it to, you know, all the other ones that are listed here. How, however, I know that social workers, from what I understand, because I was on the board when this first started, the confusion of all of this. But I know that social workers, when I was at Hillside, social workers thought that they were included in it. But I do think that everyone should find a way to be funded, but I am concerned about, are we able to sustain it after this is over? That's my concern, and depending on what the state decides to do. So I would encourage us to continue that fight with the state for Masters Pay, because I don't know if we can sustain it, but I do support it.
So just to follow up. In the budget proposal, it's listing out eleven social workers. We don't think that's accurate, so.
Yeah, I, thank you, Sonia Lopez, if she's here, for doing all that work compiling information about the, the numbers and everything. I mentioned this, so I will mention it again this week, because I think that's really important to have accurate numbers. And that took a while, and I think, and I, you know, again, think the, you know, teachers who, social workers who did that work to compile that information, so. So I will raise that in my questions. Basically, I'm putting together a big packet of questions this week that I hope to get answered, and so that's one.
And then the last question, and just this is kind of coming back around again. In November, Dr. Lewis committed to bringing back a plan before the board within four days about what it would cost to reinstate Master, to add the Masters Pay to the folks excluded for the school year. But it's been over four months, and that has not come back to the board. And so the ask from the social workers and all those folks excluded from that Masters Pay commitment, will you commit to bringing that to vote for Masters Pay for this year?
I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll send that back to him for another ask, to get that information.
Natalie, did you have an answer for that question? About voting, bringing the, bringing to the board for a vote about whether or not to give the Masters Pay to the folks excluded for the school year? That was a commitment that was made in November.
I, I don't want to commit to something that I don't think we have the funds for, and so I don't want to put false hope out there. So I'm not really interested in making people think that we could do retro payments. I am interested in looking to see what we do going forward. Thank you.
We'll go on to Article Six.
Good evening. My name is Haley Philiger. I'm a third grade teacher at EKO. I've been teaching there for ten years. And I also serve as the elementary representative. I want to speak tonight to a core issue that affects every single adult in our schools and every student who depends on us, the need for printed contracts, clear expectations, and fair extra duty pay. In any other job, a printed contract with hours, duties, and expectations is standard. But in our district, both certified and classified staff are still working without that basic clarity. That's a free fix, and it's a crucial one. At the same time, workers are regularly asked to take on extra duties without extra pay. But if administrators committed to not relying so heavily on unpaid labor and limited extra duties to two point five hours a week or less, the cost of extra duty pay would be extremely manageable. This isn't about increasing spending, it's about using our resources more fairly. Our students feel this impact. They see schools stretched thin and buildings left uncleaned and under-resourced. They arrive late to school or home, because bus drivers are covering multiple routes. They wait longer for lunch when cafeteria staff are out, and they miss out on necessary support, and teachers are pulled in too many directions without any relief. These disruptions matter. So alongside addressing compression, we must include printed contracts and fair extra duty pay. When workers cover classes, clean entire campuses shorthanded, or run additional routes, that's real work, and it must be respected. Sorry, I lost my part. So we are asking for three reasonable things. Printed contracts with clear roles, breaks, hours, and planning time, reasonable limits on non-instructional duties, and fair pay for extra responsibilities, whether it's teaching an extra class, covering a caseload, cleaning an entire school, et cetera. You all have the power to make these changes. Let's move with urgency instead of just mentioning it. Public school workers are constantly asked to just figure it out. Will y'all commit to figure it out? So my ask is, will you commit to supporting these priorities? The printed clear contracts, limits on non-instructional duties, and fair extra duty pay in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, for the sake of all of our students who deserve stable, supported school teams?
Thank you. I thought this was very, it was very informative and well laid out. I do have one question. In general, yes, I, yeah, I have one question, but I, I support this. I think maybe, maybe there would be a few tweaks. This would be excellent for me, for her too. But I think that this is. But I think that this is, this seems reasonable to me. I do think school systems assume the, you know, extra labor of teachers and staff all the time, and that's what allows, you know, this system to continue in this way. And it's unfair, it's, it's more than unfair. But it's how the people capitalize about this system. But with the extracurricular activities, just, I'm wondering, because sometimes staff may volunteer to do more than two hours, so there'd still be voluntary work that one could do. But this specifies that if one was asked to do it or required, that then they would be paid for.
Okay. I agree with that.
I know I stepped out, but this is the one that, my whole career, I dealt with this. So, and you all know it, so, so yes, 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 and yes. Thank you.
So I was, I'm concerned that y'all haven't been receiving contracts, and I look forward to you working with our new HR leadership to make sure that that happens. And I think we've made progress with our salary administration policy. A lot of this has been put in writing, and I appreciate y'all that have been a part of helping us draft that language as it continues on. And I look forward to cleaning up these issues. I don't, I don't know where the two hours a week came from, but I look forward to y'all working with HR. I think it's incredibly important, too, for us to be consistent from school to school. And I don't think that's always true in term public schools, so I look forward to getting best practices in place that support workers.
Natalie, can I ask, can you directly commit to workers having printed contracts? That is, that does not cost money. That is a very simple ask, and it's very easy.
Sorry, I thought I was clear about that. The thing I have questions about is there's a two-hour a week, and I don't know what our operating, like, HR things are right now. And so I need, you know, y'all to have those conversations, us to have them with our HR staff as we work forward together. But yes, of course.
I'm just wondering, you all have discussed this being part of the salary administration policy? Or is it, is this an ask to, is this an ask to put it, to, where, what is the ask? Where to put it?
Can you clarify?
Do you mean, okay, what I'm asking is, is this an ask to put it into policy? Or into, or to direct administration to put it into procedure?
Yeah, I think, yeah. Outlining it in the contract, so every employee knows these are my job roles and expectations. And if I go beyond that, this is how I'm fairly compensated for that extra work, like, in the contract that would be printed every year.
Where were you all when I was fighting, 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 fighting? I'm glad we're here, though. We're here.
Article Seven?
Okay, Article Seven, it's the longest one. And just, the reason for that is we tracked changes to the current grievance policy. And so I just, I want to make a couple, couple brief points to just kind of outline what this ask is about. So a grievance policy spells out the processes that workers go through if their contract is violated. It usually spells out employees' rights to bring a representative or coworkers with them to meetings with supervisors or management. There are two key points. So the current DPS policy allows for union representation at the discretion of the boss. Our proposed change guarantees the right to representation in the grievance process, that that should not be at the discretion of the managers. Another key point, the current policy only allows workers to file individual grievances. We often face common issues that ought to be addressed together. And it disempowers workers to divide us when we're dealing with a common issue. DPS's current grievance policy is weak because it prevents any workers filing complaints collectively or with representation. It leads to an environment where grievances are very rarely submitted. Workers often feel intimidated and unsupported. We propose a much more robust grievance policy that allows for multiple employees to bring collective grievances if necessary and ensures union representation in meetings with supervisors and HR. We believe that email me if you have an issue is not enough, and all DPS employees deserve a transparent and equitable process for formally handling workplace issues. These are standard workers' rights that are already guaranteed in Lawrence, Kansas, and most everywhere else across the country. So will you commit to addressing this article and taking action to implement this article before the end of the school year? This one is free.
This one is free.
This one is free, so you can do it right now.
So I like this. Was it modeled after other policies?
Yes.
Okay, I would love to just talk more about the background. I mean, I've read it, and I, I think it makes a lot of sense. And I have, it's in line with issues that I have heard from collective, from more than one person about an issue in a particular department or school. And so I think it all makes sense to me, and I think we should be expanding workers' rights, especially at this time. So I, I do support it. I feel like I have a lot on my plate before the end of the year, but I will, I think this, if we have a policy committee, I don't know that I can be the one to push it forward. I support it, and I will look through it and get my thought, my, I will also want to look at other examples and everything. But maybe one of my colleagues will champion it, and I will support with my edits. But I definitely support it, I think it's, thank you for bringing it to us.
Yeah, I definitely support this. Where was this when I needed it? I got it. I'll take a real close dive into this and share, and share with you all what I see, and yes.
I think all of our policies can be improved. I think our current policy allows folks to bring their rep with them. It's there up to them. And I'm concerned, the only thing I have, would like to look into more is this group grievance, collective grievance thing, and whether there are any state statutes that would be problematic with that. And I look forward to getting more information from folks on that. And, you know, I think we had strong whistleblower policies, which are also important. We have freedom of speech policies that I helped write and pass, so I think we've done some stuff in Durham that is aligned with this article. I look forward to any progress we need to make.
Thank you. And Mr. Tabb, it sounds like you might want to chair that committee.
I didn't say cheer. Project Director. Yeah, we'll take a look.
And we'll go to Article Nine.
All right, Article Nine. So we need a multi-year plan for supplement increases. This helps workers plan whether or not they're going to stay in Durham. We are, all of us, certified, classified, we're professionals, trying to make a living in a city with the ever-increasing cost of living. You know, we're working so hard on getting this budget right. In part, we've been talking about respecting our staff, keeping our loyal staff. We got to retain staff. But one way we're going to do that is to just have a plan for us to make a living, just like all professionals should have, is that. Could y'all commit to getting us a multi-year plan by the end of this school year?
I think we're going to have to pick and choose some things that we're going to be able to do by the time this year ends. There's quite a bit that's on our plate, and I'm not, I don't ever run from work, but I want to make sure that I don't commit to anything that I know I'm going to work on something else for you that takes my time. So maybe one of my other colleagues may commit to it, but if I'm going to commit to the other one, and I'm going to go full-force with that, and I'm very transparent, I don't want to commit to this one if I'm going to really, really go full-force on that other one. Okay? And that's complete transparency.
Yeah, I think you heard in a lot of our discussions that we brought back from, Board Member Armstead brought back from a meeting that we were all at, that a lot of districts and a lot of states do multi-year budgeting. We want to be the first district in North Carolina to do that and project out two, three years. Do I think we could do it this year? No. I just want to be honest. I don't think that's where our staff is in their, in their playing catch-up with putting out fires that they didn't start and turning over rocks that they didn't put snakes under. But I do think it's a best practice that we hope to bring. I do want to be frank that I feel like, as the state has worked to privatize and move more funding to vouchers, that we are pressing up against what we can do with local funds and what our commissioners will be able to do with property taxes. And it's just the reality of where I think the challenges for the future of our community lie. But I think we will do as much as we can in a multi-year plan going forward next year.
I also favor doing this. I do, as I was reading it, I was, it's somewhat hard to do with state budgets, but I think that we could, I think it's a reasonable thing to put together. I don't know about the end of this school year either. I have concerns about that. I think, I would like to talk to administration about the timeline. As I mentioned, I, they have mentioned starting on this salary schedule reclassification again this summer, and I know that will take some time and investment, but also it's really important to me that we push it forward. So this, I think we, I would like to see us do this. I'm not sure about the timeline, but I think we could begin the conversation right now. And I also wonder if this could be a mean confer topic as well, because I think obviously the team would bring a lot of, you know, information perspective to that conversation and come out with a strong recommendation for the board.
It could be a mean confer topic, and it could have already been, but here we are.
We appreciate you being here this evening to talk about our budget articles and priorities. As we've heard through this discussion this evening, it sounds like there are concerns about the information that you'll have available ahead of Thursday's potential vote. And it's also clear that without knowing that information, there's those tough questions about which staff to spend money on and who to spend money on this year compared to other years. And that puts all of us here, and not here, in a very challenging position and puts us against each other. And we've chosen to stand together and to ask for all the things that we've been talking about this evening, including completely understanding what's in the budget. Educators came up with these nine priorities, and thousands are ready for action in order to see these improvements happen before summer. And it's time for board members to take action. We really appreciate you being here and listening, but what workers and families need is action. So I will pose the question one more time. Will you commit to not voting on the budget until we have the transparency we need about frontline positions, the amount of money available for different items, and the fund balance?
Thank you so much for all of it, for all of the work that led up to this, all the conversations. My answer is the same, that I'm not ready to commit to not passing the budget on Thursday, but I have a lot of concerns and want a lot of information leading up to that. And again, want to see that MOU. That I think the extension is a reasonable one, and obviously that involves conversations with commissioners. So I would say I'm willing to do, you know, do a lot of work this week and in the coming weeks to, to do the best, to do right by the district as right as I can. And I think that the overall theme of budget transparency is really important, and it should be how we operate now in the budget.
Thank you all. Thank you all so much for doing this. This was really very helpful as well and very informative, so thank you. I would say that, as I've said before, I'll say it again, that I am definitely concerned that the audit has not been released. And I do want that audit released as soon as possible so that we can make some better decisions on which way to go with this budget. I can't commit to not voting on the budget if that we are bound by the MOU to stay within those guidelines. So a lot is riding on whether or not they will give us the extension. I don't mind asking questions. So if those things are available for us, then by all means, I'd rather receive more information. But if it's not available to us, and county commissioner says we have to do this by a certain time, then we are, we're going to be in a tough, a really tough position to be in. But just know that's being transparent with you, okay?
Yeah, I don't have a lot to add. I thank you for having us here. I thank you for asking tough questions and for holding us accountable. We're, we're late, we're late in the budget process, and we're going to do everything we can to move forward with as much transparency as we can get to you all and continue to ask hard questions. But also, we're not going to, we're not going to delay an ask that is critical for student needs and staff needs going forward into next year. That's what the county expects and demands based on years of work with them, so thank you.
Okay, we are going to close, and we need to get out of this room, I believe, by 7:30. So, thank you all. And I'll just add this one note, that tonight was only possible because of our membership. We are the largest employee representative organization in Durham Public Schools because of thousands of workers that have already chosen to be united together in this organization and to stand up for our kids together. We have not received any preferential treatment at all from the district to get here. All we've been asking for 15 months is a set of public meetings like this one between the majority, ERO, and with our democratically-elected team and our employers. And we look forward to starting Mean Confer in the fall, but also look forward to fixing the Mean Confer policy this year. Okay, and now we can go.